Study session to order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Sandhu is not here yet. I'm hoping he'll be here. Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani is not here yet. And Mayor Moy.
I am here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Here we are. You know, I'd like to go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance. I'll lead it tonight.
Oh, sure.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, any public comments?
I have one card, so I will read the statement. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff. Refer the matter to staff. Request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item if you're online, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And I just realized the person probably wants to speak on the budget, so it's not actually a public comment, but in case someone decides they want to give one, I've read the statement now.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Okay, then we'll go ahead and do presentations.
Okay, our presentation is by the Director of Finance, John Furtado, our budget update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff and members of the public. So I'll just go over briefly the timeline that we've been through, what our proposed changes are, a first look at what the general fund looks like and some of the other funds as well. So in the timeline, back in January, we had the council retreat. We brought forward an item on budget preparation to get some of council's feedback. Council at that point asked us to come back with what cuts looked like. In March, on March 11th specifically, we brought forward those cuts to you and we got some feedback. And then here we are today on April 8th to have a first look at our budget. We will be having another study session, if needed, on May 13th, and if not, we will adopt the budget in June. So just before I get into this slide, these, this is a summary of all the cuts that were presented to council at your last study session. The ones in green are the cuts that I believe the city manager has individually discussed with each one of you and kind of we have a consensus on those items that we will be cutting. If there is anything else that the council desires to look at into more detail on this, we can take that up at the, at any point of your desire, but preferably at the end. So looking at what those proposed reductions were that the city manager has recommended to accept, these have been deliberately divided into what's one-time and ongoing for obvious reasons. On the one-time side, IT was able to do some reductions. I'll get into the details on each slide. So we've got around 812,000 in year one and 448 in year two of one-time reductions and then another 400 to 467 in one-time reductions. So what are those reductions? On the, on the one-time side, I'll go back to this side because that goes into next year. So on the winter shelter, deciding to reduce the amount of service we provide will save 180, 150,000. Circle up, that's some of the engagement, employee engagement processes. 88,000 is being cut from that annually, so that's ongoing. We're going to eliminate printing that annual report and only go digital on that one. The downtown theater, the contracts ending, you know that we're looking into options for that as well as reducing the activity guides. Onto the current budget cycle, while we've gone now, this will be almost four years without an increase to the operating budget itself in terms of the discretionary spending. On the, in fact, we asked departments to cut 5% from their operating budgets already. And in four years, with inflation being where it is, the departments have done a great job in reducing their budgets wherever they could, absorbing all those additional utility costs. So a great job by my fellow staff members in doing that, but there were some things that just couldn't be absorbed, and that's what we are looking at today. So in the city manager's office, we're looking at doing a ballot measure based on the instructions from the last study session on the sales tax measure. That needs money, so that's around 251 time that's being requested. And then on the ongoing side, we being the county seat, the animal shelter is in Fairfield, so those costs have been ballooning. We spend north of $2 million just on animal control between sheltering and pickup. So that's a big cost driver for us, which cannot be absorbed anywhere else, so that's being requested as an ongoing cost. And then the county stance on, and Lefkoe's stance on annexations is also going to cause us an increase in our budgets there. Moving on to Parks and Rec, a small ask here. Parks and Rec has actually given back a lot to the general fund in the previous cuts, so this is more about realigning their operations, having to realign some job classifications, so a small 15,000 ongoing ask there. Public Works, they are one of the bigger departments. They have been absorbing most of this cost over the last two years. They also managed the 5% cut last time in totality. But here are some of the costs that they cannot at all absorb. So in order to manage all the projects, they need a new construction software. There are a couple of position upgrades there on the storm drains. Regulation has been increasing day by day, so they need help there. On the landscaping side, we have contracts with escalators, so this is just the contract increases. In fact, in the second year, they'll be absorbing the 3%, additional 3% over the 97,000. New restrooms were built with CDBG funds. One is going current in '26. The second one will be in '27, so just maintaining each one of them will cost us around 45 to 50 grand. And then we did accept some of the improvements from Caltrans on Straight Route 12. That's going to add 45,000 to the landscaping budget and a few upgrades on the VRF. On the police department, we did talk about this when we were looking at cuts last week. They need to replace their safety equipment by law. If it's expired, it causes a lot of liability. We have been looking at how we can better manage this going forward, so we're putting aside 150,000 for that purpose, and that's only one time, but they have recurring costs as well. The police chief froze a number of positions in the previous budget, and you know, as people retire, resign, he moves people around, so some of that realignment requires some money. We have a huge order for 29 police vehicles that need to be replaced in 2027. That is really a huge task for our fleet department to manage 29, so the police department, the fleet department are kind of of the opinion, let's do half of those in the next year and then replace the balance in 2027. But there's a cost to it because you're advancing the purchase, so that's what you're seeing there. The other ask is, in the last year, we totaled three police cars that have not been replaced, so bringing forward their replacement is going to be a cost as well. And maintaining a contract with the school districts for a public safety officer is also part of the ask here, and those will be ongoing asks of 175 and 80,000.
Sure. I have a question on the SROs. So the school districts don't pay for all of that? We pay for some of it?
That is my understanding, and the police chief can take that.
Well, they need to, they need to be straightened up.
So Mayor, they pay for, excuse me, they pay for half of the actual salary costs of the year that's contracted. The specific CSO position that we're talking about here is for the Public Safety Academy. So we are not going to put another police officer over there because just with staffing levels and costs, it doesn't make sense. And so we don't really have a CSO that we can put over there either. And so what this would be is kind of a wash. The school district would pay this 35,000, so it'd be a revenue back, but we're, we would currently be losing the money that they give us for the CSO. But the CSO is already in our current budget, if that makes sense, so.
Yes, it makes sense to me. Thank you.
All right.
Have we tried to have them pay more of the cost of our SROs?
This is actually an increase compared to what it used to be.
Okay.
And so it used to be 25%, and now they're paying 50, they're not, they just don't pay for benefits. They're paying 50% of pay, and then anything extra, they pay the maximum overtime amount for the officers for games and different events. That's a separate contract.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the fire department, one-time, again, equipment, some of their safety equipment replacement, 83,000, that's a one-time thing. Dealing with some of the electrical vehicles, need special tools, that's another 10,000 that they're requesting. And some more of this SWAT and, and teams replacements there, which is tactical emergency medical services. Then the fire department also has some ongoing needs that they could not absorb, like utilities. The costs have gone up. They received a UTV as a grant, and now they want it to be in the VRF so that it can be replaced in the future. Some cancer initiatives, and I won't go through the whole list, but it's kind of self-explanatory there. Around 95,000 of ongoing additions to fire.
Can I, hold on just a sec. Can I ask what the 7,000 for the prevention bureau is for, please? And if y'all have any questions, just shoot, okay?
Good evening, Mayor.
Yeah.
So that 7,000 is a combination of training for the prevention bureau and the new codebooks that have been adopted by the state. So it's a adoption that we have to do when they update the new codebooks.
Thank you for that. And Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. So I didn't under, I didn't know whether we were going to break at certain points to ask questions, question per slide.
However you guys want to do it.
I just didn't know, so I was kind of waiting for a breaking point.
Yeah, however you want to do it. Do you want to just ask as we go?
I've been writing down questions because he's coming through this pretty quick, so.
Okay, so, all right. We'll take, I'll take the questions after, then. Is that okay? All right, thank you. Thank you, John.
And I think this could be a good time to pause for some questions on, on the asks because this is the summary slide now of all the asks. And then these asks basically add 1.5 million ongoing to the budget.
All right. All right. So questions from council on what we've.
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman?
Yeah, back on the new restrooms, the $85,000 to maintain one bathroom a year?
It's two bathrooms, so half of that each.
What are they doing besides out mopping and cleaning the toilets?
I was wondering, I'm getting ready to retire. I'd be glad to clean them bathrooms for 85,000.
Right here, cats cleaning.
And they'll be the cleanest bathrooms in town.
So the bathroom costs are actually, it's a seven-day service, you know, and that also replenishes all the toiletries and all that. And roughly, it costs us about 40,000 to 45,000 dollars to maintain one bathroom a year.
And that's our employees doing that?
No, it's a service contract.
Thank you.
Inflation, I guess. Yeah, Councilman Tonison.
John, could you bring me back to the theater? Page five. Is that an on, explain those numbers to me, the 117 and 177-ish. Is that what we're paying?
So yes, yes, because the split is because the contract ends this year, right? So you're not, in '26, sometime in '26 is what it ends at. I believe it's 160?
So the reason for the difference is because the contract doesn't expire until August, so there are some fees that will still be occurring until that time. And then the 177 represents the real budget number from last year. So I had presented around 200,000 as just the estimate of what we would be saving. And again, it all kind of hinges on costs for electricity and any repairs that would need to be taking place before the contract ends. And then going on, there would be, still be some costs for electricity and whatnot.
The contract ends this year, correct?
Correct.
So those numbers could change depending on what we do with the theater?
Yes, so the intent is that we would be going out with our request for proposals and that we would be modifying the management agreement to mirror similar to what we do with the golf course, that all revenue that's collected needs to go back into paying all expense for the property.
Yeah, because we pay them a lot of money. They.
So 120,000 dollars for them to put on the shows, and then we also, as a city, subsidize some of the utility costs, and then we do all the repairs to the building.
So isn't the 125,000 to pay the director there?
120 for the outbreak.
It's her pay?
To put on the programs and the shows, so in the contract, they're required to do a minimum of 39 shows per year.
Okay.
And do we, we pay them a set contract price, but they.
120.
Right. But they generate their own funds also?
They do. They, they retain all of their revenue.
All of the revenue?
All of the revenue.
Do you know what that number is?
I do not, but I'd be glad to share that once I get the numbers from.
I mean, what, what if it's 350,000?
Well, that would be helpful for us.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to make some of these cuts, right?
You would, you would, or depending on what the RFP looks like. Okay, and then, John, thank you, Christina. John, can you explain the, just go over the animal shelter one more time?
Okay, I'm sorry.
That is the cost that.
Yeah, that, that's a combination of animal control and the animal shelter. So the animal control right now is a contract that we have as a part of SACCA, which is the Solano Animal Control Authority. And under that is where we pay for humane animal services, HAZ, which is the contractor that does the animal control services. So those are the actual animal control officers that respond to calls for service, whether that's, you know, an animal loose or, you know, dispute over an animal or a dead animal on a street. That is separate and apart from the animal shelter contract. The animal shelter contract is with Solano County that funds the shelter that's here in Fairfield. And so we've had a, a pretty substantial increase in both of those two contracts over the last year. On the animal control side, HAZ, I think, more than doubled what their costs were. We're in the process, we have requested, city manager group has signed a letter, basically me and city manager from Vacaville had signed a letter of interest over to Solano County asking them to give us a proposal for providing animal control services to see if there's different economies of scale. You know, we have not gotten that yet, and I wouldn't, certainly I'm not holding my breath that the sheriff's department is going to be necessarily cheaper than what HAZ is providing the service at currently. But I think the hope would be that if we're already now going to be paying such a substantially higher amount for that service, then we think there's the possibility that we could see an improvement in the quality of the service that we receive. But a part of the delay in that has been that we needed to get data from HAZ in order to give call for service data over to the sheriff's department for them to then build a model, looking at all of the contract agencies that are currently under SACCA. So that's us, Vacaville, Sassoon City, and Dixon. So right now, the sheriff's department provides animal control services for Vallejo and Benicia. This would be them basically expanding across mostly the rest of the, and I think Rio Vista, this would be them expanding across the rest of the county. So they would have, they have to sort of put together a model of how they'll expand their service that much and then give us a proposal on that cost. So we're looking into that. On the animal shelter side, right now, the way the, there's, there's been increases in animal sheltering costs, partially because of the number of animals that are going into the shelter post-COVID, right? During COVID, a lot of people went out and got animals because they were home. There's been an increase in those animals that they've seen there. There's also, you know, the, the shelter is no-kill, and so there's been just an increase in the number and the number of days that they're holding on to animals. That contract, as a part of any conversations with the sheriff's department, I am also going to be exploring with the sheriff's department and potentially with all the other cities that fund the animal shelter, some modification in the methodology and the way that contract works as well, because right now, each jurisdiction is effectively charged based on the number, number of animal intakes from their jurisdiction. But when you look at the population numbers, the percentages, it's the percentage of animals that are showing up at the shelter supposedly from Fairfield is much higher than our percentage of population. Maybe that's just coincidence, and, you know, I don't know, but that is something that we're looking at as well. But that increase in cost that you're seeing there is the combination of a 300,000-plus-dollar increase in HAZ and a 400-plus-thousand-dollar increase in sheltering costs.
Do we have another option other than HAZ?
We've been searching for two years for another option, and unfortunately, the answer is no. We've gone to, we've gone to operators that are out of Yolo County, out of Napa County. There was another nonprofit, I think, down from like the East Bay that, that we had contacted. Effectively, the two options as of right now are HAZ, which is what we're under with the SACCA authority, or the sheriff's department. The sheriff had been somewhat, I think, reluctant in order to expand their services, but I think based on very recent conversations in the past, you know, couple months, that's where they're, they're open. They just needed the data. We finally have that data as of last week that we've provided to the sheriff's department. And, you know, sometime here in the near future, we expect to get a proposal from them on what it would look like to shift that.
I'd like to see that. I've had a few encounters with HAZ, and none of them have been pleasant. There is, and I think I went out there with code enforcement, but if there's another option to HAZ, and it sounds like you're already going down that road.
Yeah, but again, I do want to make very clear, it's probably not solving any of this financial cost dynamic by shifting over to the sheriff's department.
Understood.
And that's not a shot at the sheriff's department, right? I mean, they're like us, there's a cost for delivering a service.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you. I had a, just a quick question around the theater, going back to the theater. I also, I know that Frasier Trager plays shows out of there, and so how does that, is that a separate contract, or are they a part of, I guess, the ownership of the program itself?
So the management personnel there bring in other shows or other artists, and that's between the two parties, so the city does not.
So we don't get anything from that either, that just stays within house as well?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes. I had a circle around animal services too, and I'm not sure, I'm 100
I had a circle around animal services too, and I'm not sure I'm a hundred percent clear. This amount, does this go, I, I understand we're making calls to see who could be service providers, but do we put this out on a RFP?
We have not, we, we have contacted, reached out to, I believe, every operator, nonprofit or otherwise, in our surrounding area for any organization that provides this service, and none of them have expressed interest in coming to Solano County. So we could go through the effort of putting out an RFP, but as of right now, we're pretty confident there would be nobody responding to that RFP.
Okay. You know, what comes to my mind as a small business owner, I'm wondering if it goes out to RFP and someone has transferable skills and they're like, you know, maybe I'll do animal control and, you know, I don't know, that's, as the entrepreneur in me, it just feels like a disservice for us not to put out an RFP. So my, my overarching question is, you know, in just this portion of the presentation and seeing different things on here from, uh, from a LAFCO impact of continued growth annexations of twenty-five thousand dollars to animal control, to helmets for equipment, restructuring staff, vehicle timing, like what was the methodology that the department leaders assessed and pulled out and, uh, and pulled this out for us to review? Like was, was there any method, methodology? Like, did you say, you know what, we can't go out without helmets? You know, our helmets are ten years old, we're not going to put that on this list because if someone falls and they have an old helmet, it only has a ten-year life cycle and this is year twelve. Like what is the overall methodology of what we're looking at here?
So two years ago, when we first got into this deficit issue, what we asked departments was, go back and look at your budgets. So you had a hundred dollars in budget, we asked them to live within that hundred dollars. And then a few months after that, we said, wait a minute, not only do we want you to live within that hundred, we want you to cut five and live within ninety-five. So that's, that was the instructions we did last year. Most of the departments did that, they, they made sacrifices. The fire chief froze a number of positions to fund body worn cameras, for example. So there was a methodology by which we-
Police chief, real quick, the, the police chief froze a number of positions, I just want to make sure that's clear. You said fire?
Oh, the police, yeah, sorry, my bad. Thank you. So in terms of this, this year, we, we did the same process. We opened up the budget to the departments, we told the, the instructions provided to the department heads and the budget and an analyst was, you have your ninety-five dollars, you have to live within your ninety-five dollars. So every department went in and looked at how they can adjust their costs, and if they needed money outside of this ninety-five dollars, they had to put in special requests. So all the requests that came in were first reviewed by the budget team and the city manager and discussed with each department head. The list was much larger than what you see here, so the first round was we trimmed whatever we could adjust. And then what was absolutely impossible to adjust without cuts is what we brought in here as a request.
Yes.
For every item here that is tied to a contract, has every contract been reviewed, assessed? And is there a process for every single contract in that it's a two-year contract? It's a three-year contract? It's a four-year contract and it goes back out to bid?
Yeah, we have initiated, besides all the things we've been done, doing with the budget, we had almost eight-month process by which we addressed contracts. It was one of council's goals to do. We had robust discussions within the organization, maybe over a hundred meetings internally on contract review. We've really tightened down on the way contracts are signed, the way contracts, the period of each contract. Every single contract above twenty-five thousand needs to go through me and then to the city manager. So we have really tightened on the contracting process.
So then I have some questions specifically for Public Works. Thank you. So under Public Works, um, so, page eight. So there's a few items here, you know, development review program, and that's legal and outside consultant. When you're looking, and there's a few others, I want to ask you about landscaping. So when you're going, you're scrubbing this budget and you're, you know, and these are popping out, when I see legal, I get a little concerned. I want to make sure that we're not cutting items that will lead to a risk and more expense later. Is, is that your lens as well? And specifically, legal and outside consulting?
No, this request is an additional request to pay some legal fees that we anticipate when we're actually dealing with developers. And some of this was not anticipated previously, so it was not budgeted. Now we are trying to ask for money to budget for that.
Oh, I'm looking at it reverse. Okay, so you're asking, this is the money you're asking for?
We are, yes.
We're saying cut and you're like, I want more money. Okay. I want to make sure I understand. Okay, so let me look at it again with that, with that viewpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council, right now? Okay.
Okay, so as I said, the summary of the one-time increases is around half a million dollars for just the first year, but the ongoing is going to be one and a half million dollars to the budget. A summary of those, again, the one-time, even though the department request for one-time came in, the IT savings would cover that in the first year, as well as the second year. And then if you net those two out, the ongoing expenditure for the first two years is around a million dollar, but in the third year, we don't have the IT savings, so it's one point five million adding to the budget. And then in terms of the non-general fund, there is a plan to have two temporary positions, limited term, we are building two fire stations, there's a lot of other construction projects in the pipeline. When we went out to bid, we got bids of around three million dollars to manage those contracts. So the cost analysis does make sense from the Public Works team, hiring two people for two years would be at four hundred and thirty-five each year, which is even, then it's a saving and it's a limited duration position. In the water side, they need another water distribution operator that will be funded by the Water Fund. Again, that's because of a lot of absences, injuries, and to address some of the deferred work. In IT, they have a limited duration position that was authorized in the previous budget that is planned to be converted to a full-time, again, because of the number of projects that they are handling, renewed cybersecurity risks, as well as just increased demand for IT functions in the city. And then on the general fund, now, these are adjustments to the year we are in. We just talked about the increases in animal control to the following two years, but those increases have hit us this year as well. So we're looking at animal control on the HAS contract, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand increase. In animal sheltering, another five hundred and nineteen, as you see there. Overtime for fire that is expected to go beyond the budget will be around four hundred and seventy-six. One point three million basically represents strike team representation, which is being reimbursed, so a little under half a million over budget on the overtime in terms of fire.
John, I'm sorry, I should have asked you on the previous page, this IT fund, I thought IT was taken out of general fund, but it's not? It adds its own fund?
So IT has its own fund, it's an internal service fund and all funds pay into it. So if you want to kind of make a rough estimate, seventy-five percent of IT costs would be borne by the general fund, approximately.
So it's some, it's taken seventy-five percent, does come from the general fund?
Correct. And this position that they're requesting to convert is included in their cut. So, so they cut beyond including this position. So IT is actually giving back eight hundred thousand.
And the same with the, the CIP fund, how much of that comes from our general fund?
None of that. That is all going to be funded by, by the projects or AB sixteen hundred or other sources.
And then we, we obviously have the Water Fund, so that doesn't come from the general fund?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And then talking on the media adjustments, when we adopt the budget, these numbers will be included for you to approve the increases in our current budget, which will increase our deficit as well. Looking at now the two-year budget that we are going to be seeing in the ten-year forecast, what were the key assumptions we took into account? It's really important. So it's important also for the general public and staff to realize that when we do a budget, we adopt a two-year budget, but we also forecast costs for ten years. So we look at a long-term forecast, which will show us the impacts of short-term decisions. So it's not just looked in a vacuum. So based on the direction we have as of today, we've built this budget with no COLAs for the first three years, and that's what, what's been presented to the labor unions as well. And then when you do a forecast, you can't assume that for the next ten years, you'll have a zero COLA, so we've baked in a two percent COLA in a forecast. It is not something you have approved, but it's baked in for looking at trends. Also, what I would like to stress is every one percent increase, average increase that we would provide on staffing would be a seven hundred and eighty thousand additional cost, or five hundred and eighty thousand to the general fund, on every one percent that is increased. KALPERS, another big model there. The first option is all internal, right? That's we as staff, as council deciding. When it comes to KALPERS, we have no control over that. That's, that's KALPERS giving us the numbers. We use their KALPERS forecast model, very robust, you put in the numbers, it shoots out what your liability will be. The KALPERS model assumes a return of six point eight percent. If markets deviate from six point eight percent, every one percent will hit our budget by six hundred and fifty thousand on an average. So if they're supposed to perform at six point eight, they do five point eight, six hundred and fifty gets added to the budget every year. And then KALPERS also has their asset liability management. Did you have a question?
Yes, yeah, councilwoman?
Sorry to back you way up, but I want to be clear. So in these first slides, the only slide that is a proposed reduction is slide number five?
That is correct. Those are just the items I'm recommending to you based on the conversation on March eleventh.
Based on this one?
Yep. So those, that, that, each one of those boxes are items that we presented on March eleventh as opportunities to reduce expenditures.
Okay, and so, and then slide number five is the only cut?
Correct.
And then all the other slides are, are all requests?
Correct.
Either one-time only or ongoing?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
But did you have questions on, on those or you, you're still?
I do, and I feel like you're in a flow, but I'm not in a flow with you, so.
So we, I would suggest then we address those questions now, because it's just going to get into a different path as we move forward.
Okay. So circle up education, what is that? Page five.
This is employee engagement where there's a budget in, in the HR department, they do a lot of HR employee engagement activities, they would cut that out to, to balance the budget.
The annual printed report, how many copies of that report? Like in my world, there's a print distribution plan. So do we print out a gazillion of them and they sit on a shelf? Or how many, I, I know a gazillion aren't printed out and they sit on a shelf. I do want to know.
Yeah, I, I couldn't speak to how many sit on the shelf, it's not a lot. We mail them to every address in Fairfield. So this past February, just ahead of the State of the City, everybody got a, you know, printed, fold-out annual report. The last two years prior to that was a, you know, eight-page glossy report. We went to the folded report because that saved on cost. The, the total cost estimate, though, is still in the thirty thousand dollar range on, on creating that, having it printed, doing the mailing and all of that distribution. So this would be eliminating that printed annual report and just moving to a digital-only version.
And if we did print some and, and we didn't mail them, would there be another distribution plan for less copies that reduced mail?
No, this would be eliminating a printed annual report. We would just do a digital distribution of a report.
Yep, I heard you, understood it. Is there a reduced cost plan to do less cop? Because mailing stuff at home, in my mind, is a little bit more expensive. Could there be a, a lower cost alternative that still printed out a certain amount, but still had some wide distribution? Because what I'm thinking is, is that we have so many city touches, is there a way to still get out a huge grouping of them and it just doesn't include mail?
Like for each site, like?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm sure we could come back with an estimate on doing something along those lines. This was an item to try to reduce costs overall.
Yeah. So I'm glad that we are looking at downtown theater, and I probably have the same feedback about the activity, good, it's a reduction and it's not an elimination. And I guess just in overall, uh, I know we're talking about reductions and, and I was, I slid through the slides today, thinking they're, in my mind, thinking they're all reductions for each slide, only to find out that there's department requests. So my, my first knee-jerk reaction is, are we going in the wrong direction? Is my knee-jerk reaction. So I just wanted to pin that here, just get it out my system and then kind of get back on the page with where you want to guide us.
I will make a comment in response to that. Over the last couple of years, this council's done a good job of giving us direction- Over the last couple of years, this council's done a good job of giving us direction on how to solve for what otherwise would have been, in this fiscal year, a twenty-plus-million-dollar deficit.
True.
We've reduced that. As of the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, as was in the most recent annual comprehensive financial report, the deficit spending was down about, it was about seven and a half million. We project that to be around ten million in this next year, ten million-dollar deficit with everything that we're showing you here today, the reductions as well as the increases. Over that period, what has happened as a part of our overall scrubbing, top to bottom, as John spoke to, you had a good question about, hey, have we been looking at the contracts? Are we, you know, really going through, making sure that we're tightening everything, that we're on point on that? So over the past two years, as this has been a known projection of we've got financial challenges, the organization has done a lot to tighten its belt. And we are to a point where there is no more belt to tighten without, as we showed on the eleventh, starting to substantially impact services to this community. I mean, to give you an example, we're down to the point where just in city manager's office, there was an invoice that we missed in last year's budget, so for this year, it wasn't anticipated. It's a seven thou, or nine thousand dollar expense. We're trying to determine if we're even going to be able to make our budget in this current fiscal year, now that there was a nine thousand dollar expense that we hadn't anticipated. That, that's how close we're now cut to. So I have certainly pushed as hard as I'm going to push on our department heads of, these lists, as John mentioned, there was more asks that came in as a part of this budget process that I've already said, no, I'm not presenting those to the city council. But there are certain things where those costs, we are just at a point where there is no fungibility left in some of this stuff. Down to, we had an analysis done, and as bad as this sounds, I know it sounds bad, and I don't like thinking this way, but like the vests and helmets, I said, is that just a warranty period? Is that a recommendation? I mean, we were down to looking at things like that to determine, do we really have to replace those on a five-year cycle, or is that just a recommendation to replace them on a five-year cycle? And the answer to the question that I got back was, no, that's actually, as long as the manufacturer will certify that they work. So when you look then at new vests and helmets for our firefighters, new vests and helmets for a portion of our police department, those are things I'm going to put forward to you, because I'm not going to send people into harm's way without them having the appropriate protective equipment. That, that's how, that's how close we are now, is we're looking at every line. Of course, I would, I would never sit up here and pretend that on a three hundred million-dollar-plus organization, that there's nowhere where we're not as efficiently or effectively spending money as, as possible. But we are much further now, two years into this process, than, than I would have said two years ago. We are down to, as, as folks are coming in saying, hey, we're requesting this increase, they're requesting that increase because they're in their current fiscal year saying, wait a minute, we didn't anticipate these things. And, and, you know, things that were unexpected, that are just natural cost increases, like utilities, they've already been absorbing those in their budgets for the last few years.
That's really helpful, and I appreciate the frankness. That's, that's really helpful. And if I could have just a few seconds to just pause on it and think about it, because I, I didn't, I didn't see that coming at all.
Absolutely. No, colleagues, we don't have to make these decisions tonight. We can have another meeting. We want to move toward that, but if we need more time to think and ask questions of staff, you know, off the dais, I'm happy to do that if any of that you want to do, if, if we're not ready. But, you know, I'm all ears. Any other questions here now?
For me, I wouldn't mind hearing the whole presentation, so we...
Okay. Oh, absolutely.
But to me, David, you just anchored it for me. You just gave, like, I felt like we were, I felt like I was floating around up here. Like, you know, I was coming for one thing and getting something else, and I didn't quite understand. So for me, you just anchored the conversation, and yeah, I would like to hear the whole thing, but I have a feeling I think I need, for me, I think I need to think time.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. All right, John. Onward, sir.
So looking back at, at CALPERS projections, CALPERS is also in what's called the asset liability management cycle. They do this every four years. The last couple of times they did this, they reduced the discount rate all the way from seven and a half to what you see it now as six point eight. So there is a likelihood that the board could decide on doing something with the discount rate. It's not likely from the political angle, but we never know. So that's another risk that we have to consider. In terms of property taxes, we engage with HDL, Paula Kohn. Paula Kohn is a legend on sales, on property tax. Almost eighty percent of cities use her and trust her. We are projecting anywhere from four point two to four point five percent long-term growth in our forecast. In the first two years, the growth is still averaging in the same range, but the numbers you will see will look different because of the way the county collected the actual funds. Sales tax, again, we use HDL. HDL and our Measure P committee is well aware of the HDL reports that are presented every quarter. They have seen those trends really tighten. We are projecting in the first two years, actually, sales tax to drop before it picks up, again, at a three percent rate in the long term. And then in terms of liability, this is really huge, as you saw in our last slide. These are costs that are galloping, not, not just running, they're galloping. For example, our general liability over the last ten years has gone up eleven times, from half a million to almost six million or so today. Workers' comp, we were funded at a hundred and ten percent level. We are down to eighty-four percent. We're seeing a lot of injuries, a lot of claims. So those are areas where our actuarial reports come in, which are done by outside parties, and show us what our potential liabilities are going to be. So with those in mind, the first look on the revenue side of the budget, we see here property taxes. Property taxes account for around thirty-two percent of our budget. Sales tax, closer to forty percent. User utility tax, around ten percent. And those are the growth numbers that you would see from year to year. In total, almost eighty-eight percent of our, it comes from taxes. Departments, basically, the revenue from departments, development and others, is around ten to ten and a half percent. So overall, we are projecting our revenues and transfers in from other funds, that's the CFDs that have to, that are providing service, to be around a hundred and thirty-nine, as you see there, and is what we are projecting in this year. That will increase to one forty-two and then one forty-five. So growth there of two percent and two point seven five percent in each of those years. Then you flip to the expense side. Here, we can see, we've broken this down into different buckets for, for council to see where these costs are coming from. So the staff costs, around a hundred and fifty million this year, a hundred and fifty-three next year in total. The staff cost that you see there of hundred and seven, that represents almost seventy-five percent of our budget. So discretionary spending is that twenty-five million that you see there, and then each, each of those have been projected based on trends. So as I said in an earlier slide, staffing has been taken at zero COLAs. The CALPERS effect, the effect of medical costs and known costs that have increased are affected there. So you would see those growing by one point four and three point one percent, even though there's no COLA, because there are steps. People get steps every year that would impact. We have a younger workforce, a newer workforce. We've had a lot of turnover, so as they get their steps, there's a natural increase in how much we pay. Overall, when we go to the next slide, we look at this, this is a national problem, right? This is not, not just a Fairfield problem. Expenses growing at two point three and two point nine percent. In our last budget, they were growing at eight and ten percent, while revenues are still flat at two and two point seven percent. So that's creating that widening and structural deficits are created when your expenses outpace your revenues. So we are thankful that we have reserves to actually help us through this and not having to cut today. So with that said, we were already projecting a ten million shortfall in the year we are in today. Even though we added one and a half million to the budget, as you just saw, there were other revenues and stuff that we, that went up to cover some of that. So ten point seven six is what we are projecting the shortfall in the budget to be in twenty-six, and then eleven point four in twenty-seven, as those other costs kick in. Now, what does that do to our long-term forecast? In the previous budget, we were literally running out of money at the, in, somewhere in twenty thirty-one. Now, we run out of money at the beginning of twenty thirty. So, and then in terms of the projected, I would say the projected fund balance, at the end of twenty twenty-six, we would be at twenty-three percent. So as you know, twenty-three percent would be within a three percent margin of error, so we could hit, going below twenty in the next financial year itself. By twenty twenty-seven, we'd drop to around fifteen. In twenty twenty-eight, we dropped to below seven percent. And when we hit that seven percent, it will trigger a lot of automatic things we have to do that I will talk about later. So what can we do to extend this? We always have the option of tapping back our one-time monies. We did do around seventeen million of one-time balancing in the previous budget cycle. We had identified around twenty-eight million of available funds. Now, when I say one-time funds, these are not just monies lying in a pocket somewhere. They were actually identified for other uses, right? Broadband, paying down pension obligation and other stuff. We can use this, but we are taking away from some, something else. But we do recommend using them because we feel balancing the budget and, you know, keeping that twenty percent reserve is more important than some of the other things. But it's, obviously, council has to review what our recommendations are and agree or disagree. So we've got another ten point seven five million in one-time money available that can be used to extend at least another year in, in what our projected deficit is. So here, I'm just showing that we already got authorization from you to use ten point one four in the previous budget cycle. If we use ten point seven five, we don't touch our reserves in twenty-six. But then in twenty twenty-seven, we will have to use around eleven million of those reserves. What that will do is it will help us extend by one year to run out of money somewhere in twenty thirty-one, as we were originally projecting in the previous budget cycle.
John, what's our, what percentage do we have in reserves right now?
Right now, we have around thirty-one percent.
Thirty-one. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So here's where I just wanted to kind of touch base on, we've talked a lot of budget. We've talked a lot about where the one-time balancing measures are, but before we get into the meat, this, and prior councils have adopted budget policies, reserve policies. These stem from twenty twenty, twenty-ten, and I understand the timing in twenty-ten, it might have been just during the deep recession, how things went south, the mayor might have been here, I wasn't. So basically, what, what the council did say was that we should strive to maintain a twenty percent operating reserve at all costs. If the twenty percent reserve dropped to ten percent, certain actions were required. At that point, the city manager would have to come and talk to council about the projected deficit, which we have been actually doing way in advance. We're projecting this to hit the seven percent in twenty-seven. But what actually happens when it hits that seven percent? This council will be presented with options on how that can be handled. In forty-five days, if the council does not take action, the city manager, by policy, is supposed to go and cut everybody's budget proportionately by those amounts. And he could use methods like canceling contracts, layoffs, whatever is required, if the council does not take action. So these are things that we are trying to prevent as we make these discussions and how we can achieve.
John, is this based on, when you say these are the things that have to happen, that's based on what, what I and my colleagues...
Correct.
Back into...
Correct.
Okay.
And this is your discretion?
It's not by state law or something?
No, no.
This is all within the discretion of the council?
Correct.
Okay. So just so you all know, I just wanted you to be clear what that is. So I had to be clear in my own head. I don't recall what, you know, what we did back then, but thanks for the reminder.
Yeah. Which is something that this council can review and decide to, to change. And then the last piece in that is once the city manager actually takes those actions to, to limit the difference to seven percent, he has to work towards a plan that gets back the reserves to twenty percent within three years. So I just wanted council to be aware of some of the policies that you have adopted, that we are kind of trying to manage as well. So another big factor here that we did not consider is what happens if Measure P goes away, right? We showed this slide. A deficit just doesn't go from ten million to eleven million. It goes from ten to thirty-seven million, because Measure P is a big piece of what we get. Now, the impacts we looked at, so if you've been looking at what's happening around us, you know, sometimes I can't decide whether things are changing daily, or they're changing by the minute or by the hour. It is, it is really crazy out there. We are looking here at what are the chances of a recession? Whatever you've seen so far has zero recession built in. Now, the markets have increased the chances of a recession to thirty-two percent. That's the national consensus today. It could be forty percent, it could be three percent tomorrow. Things change so rapidly these days, so, but we just wanted council to be aware that if we were to project a ten percent reduction in just two of our major classes, which is our sales tax, and at the same time, the, the CALPERS performance. If both these two go down by ten percent, the line that you see there widens our deficit to maybe twenty to twenty-two million again. So that's the dotted lines that you see there. If things go as normal, towards thirty-four, thirty-five, you see us getting, the lines getting closer, that's, that's as we phase out all the classic members and pepper starts hitting it. So very good thing to ponder and look about. And then looking at our golf funds, so the general fund portion is done. We could pause here, if you'd like, before we get into the other funds and take questions on the general fund.
Questions now?
What's the percentage of Pepper versus classic?
So we are, I believe, around 55 percent on an average in Pepper now. We are higher Pepper. Am I right, Ashley? Yeah, more or less. It's different by different bargaining units, but on an average, I believe that's where we are.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams.
I was just taking it all in myself for a minute ago, anyway.
No, me too. I think that's why I'm doing a slow light raise. So the recession impacts. If we, so this 10 percent, I just want to make sure I understand it because when I looked at the presentation, I didn't quite get it. So if we could just talk it through for a minute? Because my fear, my worry is that we are moving into a recession. And you said that right now, professionals are saying we are, did you say 38 percent?
32 percent is what the market consensus is today. That's all the, you know, Bloomberg and, you know, the great market predictors that analyze the market. That's what the prediction is today.
And that's taking in all that happened yesterday?
Correct.
So that's right this moment, not this moment, but today. Okay, so when, you know, you, coming from the financial side, looking at past recession errors in government, is the worst that we need to think about is 10 percent?
Is that a trick question?
I know, it's so, I know. I mean, in a way, I feel ridiculous asking, but then I feel compelled to.
Correct. So we can, and in fact, we have done different scenarios. We've tested this budget at a 5 percent recession, at a 10 percent recession, and a 15 percent recession. What we decided to show you, just not to overload the council with information, is what a 10 percent recession would look like.
You failed at that, sir, so anyway, just kidding.
Right, but in terms of, we can't say, that's why I made a caveat in the beginning. Things are changing by the minute, not even by the hour. You saw what happened to the markets yesterday. 3,000 swing, 1.7 trillion lost in 10 minutes. So it's really hard to say what's going to happen, but.
You can't base it on the stock market, you know that.
Right, but.
And it bounced back today and down just a little bit.
To be fair, with CalPERS, I think it's something like 65 percent of the CalPERS funds are invested in equities. So year-to-date in 2025, S&amp;P 500 is down 15 percent. I think 10 percent CalPERS loss for the year, at least as if the year were to end now, which of course is highly, you know, speculative, only one quarter in, would actually be undershooting the estimate of how much the losses in CalPERS would be. So I think what we're trying to show you here is not, we're not trying to project or predict what a recession might look like. What we're trying to show you is if there was just a 10 percent decrease in sales tax revenue in just one year, in just fiscal year '28, just one year of a 10 percent reduction in sales tax, that is how much of a difference you would have over a seven-year period from after that. Because for simple math, if you have $100 million in sales tax revenue and you have a 10 percent reduction in one year, even if in that next year, you add a 10 percent increase in your revenue, you're still a million dollars behind. Million dollars minus 10 percent, that's minus 10 million. Then 10 percent increase on 90 million would only be 99 million. So after a two-year period, you would still be a million dollars lower than where you started. So that's where, we're not saying, yep, there's a recession coming. We're not saying we can predict how bad that will be. All we're saying is, as of right now, in this two-year budget that we're starting to work our way through for the next two-year biennial budget, we are not yet factoring in any sort of recessionary headwinds. Because to date, the reports we get from HDL and Cohn on the property tax side, they're still showing, at least their predictions, their projections, are that we'll still see revenue increases, which is why if John were to go back to the revenue slide, we don't need to, but if we go back to that, you'll see 2 percent and 2.7 percent increase in revenues over the next two years. If in this year, though, we do see some sort of recessionary impact, who knows how that happens? If it's just all equities, it might just be CalPERS. If consumers stop spending, it could be on the sales tax side. If, you know, heaven forbid, the real estate market crashes like it did in 2009, that would be detrimental, right? And so those are just, there's no way of knowing what hits the fan before you hit a recession. But a lot of the prognosticators that pay attention to this stuff day in and day out are saying the odds of a recession are going up pretty dramatically here in just the last couple of weeks.
What was the, John, what was during the Great Recession? What was the percentage then? Like, did you look back at our budgets then and see how much it hit us?
In the recession?
Yeah. What was the percentage then, do you know?
I can look it up.
It's all right.
I think Ashley can quickly look it up. But what I would also like to address was, one thing, when we talk about things that we cannot predict, we don't want to bake them into a budget and cause more panic, right? But the council, this council has been excellent at keeping our reserves intact. So if a recession like this was to happen, having 31 percent of reserves is fantastic, right? It can help take a soft landing versus having to do immediate cuts that you had to do in 2010. And I think that's how the budget policies evolved after that first huge dip and severe cuts that you had to make. So we would be in a lot better position than any city in California. I can put my neck out to say that. If there was a recession, to handle it because of how we have prepared for it.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
So you recommending that we don't pay down? Because we had those measures to pay down a year or two ago. So you're saying keep the 30, 31 percent reserves and hold tight because we don't know what's coming? Is that what's being said? I just want to make sure I.
Yeah, I think overall, the message is the more you have reserves, when it's starting to look like you've got problems, it's better to have reserves than to not. So if we, instead of using one-time measures, just said, nope, just spend out of the general fund, eventually, you're probably going to need to use those one-time measures. Because if a recession happened and our revenues dropped instead of increasing as we're projecting, your expenses will be pretty much fixed at this point. As John said, about 75 percent of what you pay for is personnel. So without cuts, without, you know, changes, whether that be some strategy like furloughs or layoffs or, you know, further hiring freezes, those types of things, that personnel cost is pretty much fixed at this point in time. And you would have an acceleration of increase in your PERS liabilities because if CalPERS loses money in their investment portfolio, their policies work that anytime there's losses, their member agencies make up for those losses over an amortized 15-year period. So your expenses will be fixed and then on the PERS side go up. So even if you're, it's a very challenging. We have never quite, local government in California has never quite recovered holistically from the Great Recession. And then COVID hit. Everybody thought, oh, here we go again. It was an odd way in which it impacted the economy in that you had people that all of a sudden, we were setting records for sales tax revenue increases. Because what were people doing? They weren't traveling, they weren't going out to entertainment, so they stayed at home and shopped. And they shopped for big-ticket items, they bought cars. And at the same time as they're buying those cars, the cost of those cars were going through the roof because of supply chain issues. So not only is your revenue going up because people are buying new cars, but it's going up because the cost of those cars is getting 20, 25 percent more expensive. And then online sales exploded. So we saw strong revenue growth. That revenue growth has ceased. Now, we're back to more of a normal, long-term trend on revenue growth. But the expenses, the inflation that we all feel at the grocery store or at the gas pump are the same things that's happening to the city right now and to most cities across the state. John has shared with you all a few times as we've had some of these sessions. You know, I think you throw a dart at a dartboard and you almost can't miss a city that is having some sort of financial challenges that are very similar to this, that we're dealing with. Where I'm proud of us and this council's leadership is that it's been a couple of years since we've been saying, this is coming. We need to start addressing this. Otherwise, you see some other cities, even just here in Solano County, as they've had a few of these meetings just here in this year, the number they're projecting on their deficit is getting bigger and bigger each time they're coming back and taking that closer and closer look as they're refining it on their budget.
Anything else on the info so far? Okay, all right.
So moving on to golf funds. These are very preliminary numbers. We are showing them to you, but we still have to go back to Touchstone because I'm not fully convinced. In terms of the net operating income, this year, we're projecting just under a million. Next year, it's dropping a little bit primarily because of a lot of capital needs on the restaurant side and remodels and other things that I believe are baked in there. But I still have concerns on the margins that they've taken into account. So you'll get a more refined version of this when we come with the final budget. But what we also wanted to highlight here on the golf side was that there are needs, right? Even though they are generating a net operating profit that you see down there, there are significant needs for the capital needs that you see there. And then just to touch upon what their rounds have been, that's just a slide showing you their rounds. Another 3.1 million worth of deferred capital needs that will go into the future. Some of these will be addressed with our energy conservation, but others need to be talked about and recommendations might come from the advisory committee. I know that this slide was requested by the mayor on what we gave as the general fund to the golf funds. So around 27.6 million was given to the golf funds in terms of advances. 12 percent, at 9 percent interest, there was around 12 million of interest there. So if you had to say, how much did we give in cash, it was 15.6. We also made 12.2 million of transfers to the golf fund. So 27 million would be the ballpark of what we gave them. We collected around 13.7 in admission tax between 2000 and 2024. That is the general fund collected, around $550,000 to $600,000 a year. Any questions on the golf fund?
Yeah, one other thing I want to point out with golf that, you know, that we're paying attention to, you know, just over the hill, up I-80 in Vacaville, they have Lagoon Valley. They're building a golf course there. So, you know, John shared the slide with the rounds. That's something that, you know, as that golf course comes online here in the next couple of years, I don't know the exact timing on it, that's something that we'll be paying close attention to. You know, I used to work in, city down in the Palm Springs area. And, you know, COVID really positively saved golf, I mean, as an industry. But one of the issues that we faced down in the desert was there was simply an oversupply of golf courses. And so across the board, a lot of golf courses were struggling. And, you know, my sort of, you know, blunt answer was, well, we've got too many golf courses. So, you know, I don't make light of that. But looking at Vacaville building that course, that's something that could impact us in terms of total rounds, which would be an impact on the revenue side in future years on our golf courses.
Okay, move on. We saw a little bit now on the water funds. I'll touch upon what we are seeing. So between 2018 and 2021, we had 4 percent increases. Over the last four years, we have not increased water rates. So what has that, how has that impacted us? So last, in 2023, we turned off, turned on a profit. Last year, when we closed the books, we lost 2.1 in operating. We still are strong in cash in those terms, but as an operation, we lost money. And we project without rate increases to accelerate those losses on the operating side. What are we doing to address that? We have a robust plan, a master plan that has almost been finalized. It's being reviewed. The municipal code related to water is being reviewed. The municipal water regulations are being reviewed. All those are happening right now. In May, we intend to adopt the plan. The council will begin to hear about it and then roll out of the fact sheets. In June would be the adoption of that, of the regs, finalizing of what those rate increases or decreases might be at that point. And then begin the public outreach as is required for every 218 process, right? And then July, August, basically more of that. In September is where this council would adopt those rates and they would become applicable. Last slide here, maybe just a few more slides to go. But talking about the intragovernmental services fund, I know the council was kind of asking about how much money do we have? Where is this money? What is this money doing? So as the close of last year, we had around 31.5 million in cash in this fund. But we did project to use 6.7 of those to balance the budget as one time. And then there are planned uses for each of those categories or identified buckets. For example, for broadband, we plan to spend around 2.5 million. There is a potential to, for 2.5 million to be used somewhere else if council decides. Economic development, I know it's a big focus of this council in your retreat. You said that we want to focus on economic development. Our community development director presented a plan on how he would be spending money down from his allocation in the IGS. So those are the allocations that are already taken. Homeless navigation, we had on council direction, kept this money aside. Council could decide to do something else with it. LLMDs, as you see there, Markley Lane, these were the monies that we identified and moved to the IGS after we cleared through the ARPAS fund. The Pell Center, we have some monies remaining there. And then, of course, the Socha complex. The unrestricted that you see in green, those are the ones that we've identified for one-time use already in the 10.7 million or so that we plan to use. Looking at internal services, our internal service funds. I know the question has come up from this council quite often on where is the money and what is the liability? And what are we doing? So the general liability, we just have half a million there. If we had to pay out those projected liabilities, it's 7 million. So there's a 6.5 billion, so it's almost 90 percent underfunded, 90 percent or so. Compensated absences, that's the fund that holds all the leave balances of our staff. Around 22.5 million is the liability. We have around 7.2 in cash. So we are 15.3 underfunded there. And then when we did this analysis, 6.5 million would be required in the next year just looking at our staffing that is due to retire or can retire in the next year or two. And then our Calpers, UAL, that's a big one. 248 million is what we would owe Calpers if we, which we are 65% funded. Our vehicle replacement fund, we are trying to catch up with whatever purchases need to be done immediately. That's around 17 million underfunded. We have around 11 million in cash. Workers' comp, we've got around 10.3 in cash. We have a projected liability of 12.3. And again, when you see that liability, it is not at 100% confidence. This is at a 75% confidence. So we have an actuarial who will say that all these people who are injured, you will pay them X over the life of their time, like Calpers. So only at 75%, the liability is that much. If we were to increase it to 100%, the liability would go up by another 5 or 6 million. And then the IT funds has got around 12.4 million set aside for replacement projects and other things. Any questions on ISFs? Okay, so that's about all I had. So this was to give you a first look at the budget, go over what cuts the city manager proposed, if there were additional items that the council would like to look at, and if the council would like to give us direction to prepare a budget and bring it to you in July, in June. Or if you would like another study session, we can do that as well. I'll open the floor to the council.
Thank you for the presentation. I just want to say to my colleagues and to citizens here that I'm just really proud of you all because this isn't easy because we know that it means impacts to people. And every one of us care very much about the people here who work here and the people who live here. So I just want to say I'm proud to work with you. And I think today was just a little bit dark. I felt like there was a little piling on. But I understand that, you know, reality sometimes is extremely painful. So I'd like to hear from you about whether, oh, we have a couple of things, a couple of people who want to speak. Okay. Well, do you want to hear them? Do you have a question? Councilman Doug?
John, you bummed me out. But what do we have? Ending on a note like this, for me, you know, a professional counselor, I always like to end on a higher note. I know that that's kind of hard when it comes to budgeting. But is there anything that you can think of or anybody here on the horizon that could help, that could change things, that we could possibly project? You know, or putting energy towards that kind of thing? I don't expect an answer now. But, you know, like I've always said, every problem has two things in common, a barrier and a solution. And I think that we do got a new, a couple of things that we're not talking about tonight.
Right.
But I just want everybody knowing and watching that we are, we do have some positive stuff. We do. We're not talking about our tax thing tonight, all that. But it isn't all gloom and doom. And we do have some other things on the horizon, some people looking at Solano County. I mean, there is possibilities, and I just wanted to say that before.
Thank you, Councilman Doug.
Everybody drags themselves out of here.
Yeah, and if I have to say something positive, I have to say that this council has been very prudent in keeping those reserves, right? I hate to be the bearer of good news, of bad news, but-
We heard you the first time.
But it is what it is, right?
John. Yeah. But you had, you know, this is your job, so. Okay, so we'll go ahead and take the public comment, please. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Mandrell Knight.
And come up here.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm here on Bay North Church of Christ. I've been with Bay North Church of Christ for seven years. I work with the homeless shelter service. And this is absolutely the first homeless shelter that I worked in that I saw that people was doing good, that the system was doing good. Because I worked in several in Fairfield Cordillias. And I'm originally from Stockton, so I worked there for a few years. And I've never seen a program like the one at Bay North Church of Christ. And I worked there overnights with their guests. And just the last day that I saw them leaving, it was just a sad, just like to see like your family member leaving. And a lot of people were so grateful and thankful that we had that program that it was no longer there. I saw a lot of people changed. People got housing. Some people went to find their relatives and moved back. And it was just a thought that when I was younger, that I was like homeless for a little while. And I would just have thought about if we had that same program or type that we had at Bay North Church of Christ, that a lot of people's lives have been changed. So it's just sad to see like funding is cut from, for that, for them. And, you know, I see them on the streets and I know them by their name, like Sandra, Billy, Frank. I could just name the whole roll calls because you know they're for like six, seven months. And this is not my first time doing this. I've been doing it for, like I say, a long time. And just to see them leaving and you know where to help. And just see them lined up like 2, 1 o'clock just to get the first spot because there's not that many rooms. And just to say that our shelter was like the best shelter they'd been to, you know, just food and stuff. It's just sad to see them gone and they got no help. So I'm just hoping that you guys find some type of way to get them back and get them some type of help. And I'm done because it's like getting emotional just to talking about them because they're like good people. And just thanks to our pastor, Sam Morris, for doing all he's doing for the city. And it just made me a better person just to see him. And it's made me a better person just to see the people that came into the shelter. And I was teaching them and they were teaching me as well. So it was just a blessing for that. And so that's all I have to say.
I want to thank you for your service to those folks.
And the next speaker is Pastor Sam Morris.
Hello.
Happy birthday again.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I want to first just say thank you, Mandrell, for sharing. I want to start off by acknowledging our mayor, Cap Moy, the absent of Pam. And Doris, it's good to see you. Doug and Scott and Patrice and our city clerk, David. You know what time it is. David and our chief of police, if our fire chief is still here. First responders, all who work for our city to keep our city great. I stand before you just aware of some of the changes I know that the city must make. I am, you know, a little bit surprised and taken back just based upon trying to discover how you assess the necessity to make these cuts based upon the information that we provided. I want to just first thank Samantha Burrows and her team for their outstanding efforts in helping us launch the warming center. I believe the team and some of my church family and individuals who received employment because of it provided exemplary performance and opportunities to serve our community was commendable. I want to say it's been heartwarming and it's been rewarding to engage our community in a manner where we witnessed a transformation of lives of those who are without housing in our city and those circumstances that they have gone through. And watching them evaluate their circumstances, grow in confidence, as well as self-esteem, moving from despair to hope. That transformative journey is something that we've been a part of. I believe that many of those individuals, they were here today to advocate for themselves, literally were in tears at the closing of March 31st. It's essential that we don't overlook this opportunity that you have created, and so I thank you for that. But it's not a moment to celebrate or recognize achievements. It's actually a call to continue to sustain those efforts that have been what I consider a huge return on your investment. If we look at all of the things that we've seen and witnessed today, 85,000 for maintaining two bathrooms, 77,000 for entertainment in our city with no accountability or restitution to our city. We must look at the fact that we spent $150,000. We served our shelter in those five months with 3,500 paid hours of your funding went to those who didn't have jobs prior to this. So it has a twofold methodology to it. We're talking about the most harnessed weather we've had in years during that season with formidable weather, which might have prevented serious death, serious disparities that we don't have on our record because that warming center was open. These benefits extend beyond, you know, those who we serve in our city. But I want to know as we navigate these challenges ahead, it is crucial that we remain faithful and focused to what Fairfield has always been about. And it has always been about community. It has always been about caring for those who are less fortunate. And I think we must remain and keep that integrity as I look at the amount of funding we navigate for pets, and I do appreciate that. But however, the margins for what we do for our homeless community cannot be marginalized any more than it is. Moreover, this approach that I'm committing to you today, I believe will help alleviate some of the burdens that will ensue if you do not continue to fund us. Those 10 people are those, let me just get those numbers accurate, those 700 hours a month and those 3,500 hours during November to March.
Dr. Morris, your time's run out, but I'm going to give you a little bit, a little more.
If you gave me the key to the city, will that unlock like one more minute?
It'll unlock one more minute, bro, you know, because we love you, but you know.
Thank you. Forgive me. And I'm going to land a plane here.
Because your birthday and everything else.
I just want to close here. I believe that we did alleviate a lot of hardship on our first responders, the fire department, police department, who would have been out in the middle of the night bringing those individuals to maybe the hospital like North Bay and plaguing our emergency centers, which I visit because I chaplain and watch and step over them when we're not open. I do understand the hardship and the amount of money you're going to spend anyway in overtime and making sure those services are provided. We understand it's difficult situations for you to make. But I do employ you and beseech you to find another method without cutting our abilities because our record and integrity and reporting to Samantha was impeccable. And the services speak for itself. We were. I would say 85% occupied the entire duration of our services. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Doug?
And Sam, I did, I'm sure you heard I came by. Yes, and I looked. And I just want to comment real quick. It was, it was one of the neater, neatest, well-organized function that I've seen. It was really good from the heater to put all their stuff in to kill any, it was just a class A job. And I want to thank you from the city.
Is there anybody else?
Did anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Yeah, if you give me your name, I can do it. Michelle Hill? Okay, come on up.
I first, I'm so sorry.
No.
I first just want to say thank you to every single person sitting on this because I understand how difficult it is. But I just wanted to share my experience. I am officially titled intake coordinator, which means I got to speak to every single one of those participants. And for, I understand for you guys, those participants were just a number. For me, they're human. And I really, I understand. I understand that our police department and everybody needs funding. But I, please, I beg you guys to look anywhere you possibly can because I was there. We were full. We did have participants that felt comfortable not only to speak to us, but to get help. Samantha and their team did come because they trusted us, because we were there every day. We cared. But we only had that ability because you guys gave us that ability to allow Sam to give us that space. So please, I understand the difficulty you guys have. But please, look into any way we can to try to get funding for the shelter because these participants are human. And even right now, as I speak to you, I see them sleeping at 7:11. And not only did I get to work in that community, I lived there. So I did see that there were not people sleeping at 7:11 anymore. And they weren't at Gateway because they did have the ability to come and take a shower and have a warm place to sleep. And right now, now they don't. They don't. And I understand, but please, somewhere, please find it. Look, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Deborah Howell.
Okay, Howell.
H-O-W-E-L-L.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you, Deborah.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to piggyback on what everybody has already said about the shelter. The shelter was an eye-opener for me. It gave me insight on people. Because sometimes we think because they're homeless that they're drug addicts or alcoholics. But when you talk to them, they all have a story. They had a story behind why they became homeless. And to be able to see them come in night after night, they would literally be outside on the sidewalk at 1 or 2 o'clock and the shelter doors didn't open until 6:00. We had continuing people. We had one gentleman that came, was able to go back. They found him a place to live. He got his job back because he was homeless, so he couldn't go to work. He was able, they were able to come in and take a shower, get a good meal, not just a bologna sandwich or hot dog. They got chicken fettuccine.
They had the grub on over there.
They had good food. And they, you know, they was looking forward to it. So I ask you, look into your heart. Like I say, that could be me. That could be my daughter, my grandchildren. We have to think of these things. When we can give money for animal shelters, is animals more important than people? No. By no means are they. Yeah, you care for them, but we have to look for it. Don't think of it as, well, it's just homeless people, they'll find something. But you run them out of places. They go find another place. But for these, from November 1st to March 31st, we had people that knew they had a place to go that was safe. They come in out the rain. They didn't have to sleep out in the rain. They didn't have to sleep on the concrete and say, make a pillow out of whatever they could. They had pillows. They had warm blankets. They had a cot. They had a safe place. They could come there and get toothpaste and deodorant and soap and be clean and had clothes. We provided them with clothes if they didn't have clothes. We had people that was donating new stuff, not used. A lot of it was, some of it was used, but most of it was new. Donating so that they could have, feel better about themselves. And that's all any of us want, is to be able to feel good about ourselves. Give us an opportunity to make others feel good, to be able to go out and find a job, be able to find a place to stay because they need that. When you see people laying on the streets, it hurts your heart. It hurts your heart because they chase people away from the apartment complex I lived in. They chased people away from that encampment. So where did they go? Went and built another one. But some of those people came to the shelter and they was there day after day. And I thank you for your time, but please find in your heart to find some money for the shelter to come back.
Thank you.
Did anyone else wish to speak? Okay.
All right. I wanted to say something about this because looking, you know, through everything that we were looking through today, a couple of things struck me. And the one thing was about the animal shelter. And I know what it's like to help people who've lived on the street. I've said it before, I lived on the street in San Francisco in the 80s. I know what it's like. And I think by looking at this that we should think about- we just saw, that we could take 150,000 out of that for this next year so we could do the shelter. Something to think about because I'm just saying, we know that they do a good job. And if you go over there and eat every day, well, I don't want to because I need to lose weight rather than gain a bit. It's good because, because Dr. Morris doesn't feed any food that isn't good over there. But the bottom line is, is that I think we could take a portion of that, and, and that's something we could look at. And I know that Councilwoman Williams said you'd like to have some more time to kind of let this stuff saturate and roll it over. And how does everybody else feel about that?
What else we could do?
Okay, so we could come back next month for another special meeting and, and then think about those things? Is that, is that what you're thinking?
You're saying a special meeting just to, to fund the shelter?
Well, well, we could decide that right now.
Huh?
The reductions.
Right, for the reductions and-
We're coming back anyways, right?
We're coming back.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So we'll wind it all then, and, I mean, I'd like to, to send you away with hope that I just saw, saw, go ahead, David, I know you want to say, don't make me any madder. Go ahead, if you want to say something.
Yeah, just, just to confirm, I mean, I'm sort of watching reactions up here, so I think what I'm hearing is come back for a May study session. But I think to, to your point, Mayor, you all could decide right now out of the intergovernmental service fund.
It's one-
There is 1.4 something.
Million. And so we could just take 10% of that, a little bit, more than 10% and, and fund this. So we know that, does that work for you all?
That would be page, oh, I can't see if you're on the, page 32. The title at the top is intergovernmental services fund.
Mayor, that, that works for me. I mean, then we can leave with some-
Leave it with something? Okay.
Yeah, you guys did a great job.
Then, then that's a motion of second. Then all in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye. So you, you guys have another go and keep praying for us, please.
Now let's leave.
Yeah, that's it. That was our up, up, and so we'll come back and, is that, yes?
So for me, I, I really, thank you for the additional time.
Oh, I think we all need it.
Yeah. What I was also trying to work through was the, the impact, the true impact of the cuts. And I, so I really, I, I would love to see that. And also, are we also, also, we're just talking about reductions, are we also going to talk through these increases? Because, David, to your point, you know, I, I don't, I don't think we should, I think we should muddle through that, too.
Yeah, I mean, there are some things that I wouldn't budge on, and that is any of the safety equipment for our first responders, or actually anybody, I mean, you know, public works, anybody that I think I saw. Anyway, yes. And, and also on one-on-ones, you could help us with that as well.
Okay, so in, in this, this, this next study session, David, as you could tell, you really impacted me through your, your words. So in that, it's, it will capture everything that, that we didn't capture, like, you know, invoices, bills, what have you, or just underestimating, oh, we can cut by 10,000, but, oh, we should have just done 5,000 because we've cut too deep? Is, is that what we're going to capture in this next study session?
I, I mean, we would never plan to get to the invoice level.
Oh, okay.
You know, down, down to that level, I mean, it's just, it's not practical given the sheer size of, of the organization. I, I guess I would, I would sort of frame back for you as more of a question of what would help you all in terms of moving forward. So, you know, this is sort of the first look at the bottom line, right? So there's all of the factors that go into play that, that John has covered here where it's ultimately revenues and expenses and what's impacting the increase in revenues and expenses and how we get there. And that's kind of that top-line view. But we're happy if you want us to come back, you know, I'm hearing that you all want another discussion on this. So we come back at a May study session, then my question would be what, what would help you all the most in terms of what you would like to see at that study session in order to make final decisions? Because the, the way we had it lined out was, you know, again, John shared on the, on that slide early on, May study session if needed. And then from there, that's effectively the final direction that council gives us. Then John and his team, they go and they finalize the, you know, ending, you know, inch and a half thick budget document that comes back to you all in June for adoption.
Councilman Doug?
So May, the May study session will make, make the-
Make the decisions?
The decisions.
Yes.
That, that works for me. I just need a little more time. You guys know how I am, I got to study each one of these and, and for-
It's good for all.
And then, I mean, what we're talking about is just, it'd give us time to noodle it and come to the-
Yes.
And even questions before that study session.
Yeah, because we-
We can, we all sit down with you, so we can do that, too. I have a few others. But again, I want to thank all of you guys. You guys have been so great to work with. I appreciate you. And before we go tonight, I just wanted to invite everybody on Friday. We're having a celebration of life for Mayor Chuck Hammond. He was the first, you could see him up there on the wall, he's three before me, well, Matt is, anyway, count one, two, three, four. He was the first African-American councilman here in Fairfield, and then the first African-American mayor. And he started the, the youth commission. He, he was a coach and he loved, everybody had a nickname, didn't, I mean, everybody knew him as Coach and, or Mayor, or Mayor Coach, or whatever. And he had a nickname for everybody. He was a very close friend of mine. My family worked with him to get elected. But you're all welcome, and that is at 11 o'clock here at the community center. And his wife, his widow will be there, and his children. So we invite the whole community, all right? Thank you very much, and God bless you all, and we will see you, okay? All right. Take care. And I'll close the meeting.